But I was really impressed by his conversation.
Yeah, he's going to be on the radio on the thirty first of January. I'm sorry, on the thirtieth. Father Phil will be on the thirty first.
Oh, I get it. And I've been asked to be able to share it on my review show.
Well, congratulations.
And so we're going to be on on the thirtieth. So, you have a very merry Christmas.
The Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. Here with Chris Lee Sixus Dean on the live radio. Gwen Asma Edwards, retired city clerk, former city commissioner, city of Daytona Beach. The Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards on the live radio.
Stan, you've been sitting much too long, much too long. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Welcome to Truth, a radio program designed with you in mind, a program whose sole purpose is to empower you with knowledge for... Oh, praise God. You know, Dick always throws me off when he says Gwen and her truth. But information leads to knowledge and knowledge is power. Knowledge is power and I want to empower you to take control of your life. Those things that impact you, your family, and your community. As always, too, I want you to go to the website at www.gwen-truth.com so you can link into all of those important links that give you all that important information which will make you what? Oh, powerful. Oh, powerful. Go there, too, so you can also chime in on the poll that we have going. And it's asking you about what's in the news today, Obamacare. Whether or not you think it will actually help to provide quality, affordable care to those who are in need. All right? As has been stated, I'm Gwen Asma Edwards, former city commissioner, retired city clerk, city of Daytona Beach, author, minister, community volunteer. All things to all people, right? And I say happy holidays and I follow it with and have a merry Christmas. And I think one reason that people say happy holidays, though, is because there's more than one. But I'm sure there are those who just don't want to say Christmas. But I do say merry, merry Christmas. Have a good Christmas, guys, and remember the reason for the season. Shout out to all of my listeners, shout out to all of those who understand that the best gift that you can give to your family and to others is yourself. Your time and your attention is the best gift that you can give. Because, truthfully, that's the gift that we seem to hold back and cling to for ourselves. And if you could do more of that, especially during this holiday season, that would be so well received and so much appreciated by those who love you, those who don't know you but want to get to know you and everything else. So give a little of yourself this holiday season. Now, because we're... We know, we all know, Candace, that education is just so, so super important. And it's one thing that my mom always told me, that education is one of the most important things you can get. And it's the one thing that no one can take away from you. So, we're going to talk a little about education. We're going to talk about a subject, Candace, that's been on the minds of many people. In fact, you hear so much about it that it's kind of interesting when you think about it, that there are people who talk a lot about it, but you wonder when you learn a little bit more about it as to whether or not they actually know what they're talking about. I won't go any further with that. But the bottom line is that this is an important issue that we're going to discuss and it's called Common Core. And I've asked Candace, who is the recently elected chair again, of the Volusia County School Board, to come on and share information with us about Common Core. We've had a little information, we had some from the union rep, we've had people who would allude to it. There are newspaper articles and I'm sure a lot of you have read about it. There are commonalities and common strands that are the same in many locations around the nation, but there are also some things that might be different based upon our locale and where we live and work and play and our children and our educational system. So, I've asked Candace to help us to understand Common Core, what it's about. Candace, if you would share with our listeners first whatever you want to say about you, because I and local people know that you are a very, very knowledgeable person who is very passionate about education and you devote a lot of time and energy to that, not just here locally on the school board, but you also work at the state level, I believe, serve at the state level, in addition to...
Common Core.
Yes. In addition to doing some things and going to conferences, I'm sure nationwide. So if you share a little of that and then let's get into Common Core. What is it?
Gwen, thank you so much for this opportunity. It's... I want to talk a little bit about Common Core, what it is and what it isn't. And if you don't mind, I'll bring in a few of the experiences that I've had locally and at the state level as we have this conversation. So many people believe that Common Core is a federal mandate and that it's been brought to us by the federal government, imposed upon us, mandated by the federal government, and nothing could be further from the truth. So what is Common Core state standards? Well, the word state is in that name. And this was a cohort of governors and commissioners of education that did not like what was happening with No Child Left Behind. And if I just... We could just flashback about ten years. No Child Left Behind was an omnibus bipartisan piece of education that was really a capstone for President George W. Bush and Senator Ted Kennedy. And they came together and said, "This is going to give every child an opportunity to learn and succeed." And so this, if you want to talk about federal intrusion into education, the No Child Left Behind Act was the template. It replaced what was called the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA, which has now gone back to that terminology. That being said, every state had to do a few things. One, they had to give a state-developed exam and they had to do major longitudinal data collection. So many states, and because of Governor Jeb Bush, Florida was very well positioned with longitudinal data. We had an infrastructure set up due to the FCAT that was brought to us in the late nineties, ninety-eight, ninety-nine. So we had that data collection ability. Because most states did not, the federal government said, "Okay, you have a few years to implement these state... your individual state standards." So what happened? What happened that first year? I think it was two thousand and four, and at that time Secretary of Education was Ron Page for President Bush. And I distinctly remember him being on a television show, I did, I believe, an interview with Judy Woodruff and saying... And she said to him, "Secretary Page, tell me why eighty-seven percent of the fourth graders in Mississippi met their state standards and only seventeen percent of the students in the state of Florida in the fourth grade met their language arts state standards." And he really didn't have a coherent answer for that. But the true answer was that every state developed their own test and it was absolutely invalid. Obviously, the students in the state of Florida are not... I should say, the Mississippi students are not that much smarter than the ones in the state of Florida. Our test was tougher. And if all beings equal, the state of Massachusetts had the highest level of state testing of any state. And the way we knew that, there was only one test that we give nationally across the country and it's called NAEP, National Assessment of Educational Progress, the NAEP test. So when you look at the NAEP scores, there was a true disconnect between what each state was doing and what their NAEP score was. So, but however, Massachusetts came the closest to aligning with their state test and the NAEP score. They were the highest in the country. So there was sort of a wake-up moment for the governors and the chief councils of education throughout the country and they said, "We have to do a better job." And that was the beginning of the conversation about having common standards across the nation. So common standards, what are they? They're high-quality standards for only two subjects, English Language Arts and Mathematics. And we adopted them in the state of Florida in 2010 and we have been implementing them in the kindergarten first and then second grade. So the past three years, we have been implementing only in those lower, what we call our primary grades, kindergarten first and second. And there's also something I think that people need to realize, there's a tremendous difference in educational terminology between standards and curriculum. And I think this is where some of the confusion lies. Standards are a set of knowledge and skills. That's what students should master at each grade level. It's the what? What should students know? Curriculum is the how. And the curriculum is developed... So the standards are national standards, yes, not developed by the federal government, but by this collegial coming together of forty-five states and the District of Columbia to set the standards. But each state has developed their own curriculum in order to implement these standards. So there is local control over the curriculum. So, and also there was a misconception that in order to get the Race to the Top Grant... Now, this is, I think, where some of the misconception about President and the federal government intrusion and Secretary Artie Duncan saying the federal Race to the Top Grant, that you had to... That in order to receive those funds, you had to incorporate Common Core state standards in that grant application. I can tell you, when I was... As a result of being president-elect of the Florida School Boards Association, Governor Chris at the time appointed me to the Race to the Top Committee. And there were about twenty of us, two school board members, two superintendents, union members of the Chamber of Commerce, the State Chamber of Commerce, conservative Republican senators and House of Representatives. It was a broad mix sitting around that table. Because the first Race to the Top Grant that Florida participated in was not... We didn't win. You know, and it was done totally by the Department of Education and it was thrown out. Governor Chris put together a community committee of educators, business, just a parent-teacher association, just across the whole length and breadth of Florida. And we submitted a grant. Now, we never... It was never said that we had to do Common Core state standards. But as a group, again, the business community, the education community, the parents, the teachers, all said, "You know, this makes sense." And so we incorporated into it and we won that grant. But I will tell you, Virginia did not include. And they're one of the states that did not go along with the Common Core state standards because they felt their standards were higher than the ones required by Common Core. They did not, but yet they won the grant. So again, to dispel that the federal government forced it upon us because the Race to the Top money is just not factual, again. So again, we talk about curriculum and it's really important to understand, it's the content that is developed by local school districts. And we've had teachers in Volusia County that actually sat on committees for English Language Arts and Mathematics that helped develop our curriculum in order to implement the standards of Common Core. So we've had very, very much a hands-on, local control aspect to what's happening. And each county also develops their own, what we call, curriculum maps. Gwen, I don't know if you remember what... When we went to school, you just had a textbook. And that's what you're teaching or taught from and the textbook was there.
And that's what you were tested on.
And that's what you're tested on. Well, that's no... That's just regurgitating. It's regurgitating and that's not developing critical thinking skills the twenty-first century model of education requires. And so what these curriculum maps, again, are developed by our teachers locally and there are different materials and resources. So we have a couple of in-house things in Volusia County. We have EMOTO, which is sort of like a network within the schools that they can post and kids can have collaborative conversations in their own classroom. And it's... No one from the outside could get them. This is just classroom by classroom, no one else, unless they want to collaborate with others. We also have Safari Montage, which is an internet access point for tons of information on the web that's pertinent to what we're teaching in our schools. So these are just... And then, of course, ton... You know, when you think about learning today, there's just so much out there.
Oh, yes.
Just to try and work through it. So that's why the standards are so important. And according to the Department of Education, the Language Arts standards of FCAT were an A, I believe. And the Common Core state standards, I think, were an A or an A minus. So they benchmark them against one another and a great bit of the Common Core state standards are based on Florida's FCAT because we have such high standards. And this is also a great cause of celebration because there's a lot of collaboration that has to go on with Common Core. Not only within schools, but within... Across schools. We have a program that's really been so successful at Cypress Creek called Thinking Math. And we had a demonstration in a fourth-grade math, Gwen, that just left me thinking, "Thank goodness I don't have a child in the fourth grade," because I wouldn't be able to help them. But you could see the building blocks that they were incorporating into teaching children critical thinking, more word problems, more assessing instead of just memorization. And today I had the great pleasure of, at a school in Deland called Citrus Grove, and they had a door contest based on the holidays, but also on Common Core state standards. So one of the things was, how are you going to get... Tell in a narrative with some specifics, how are you going to get Santa who's stuck in a chimney? So, I mean, some of the things, well, first I would go and get my toy bulldozer, you know, or get butter and melt it and pour it... One child... But they had to go through all these steps of how they were going to get Santa. Another one was, what would happen if you woke up inside of a snow globe? What... I mean, all these... And these are third, fourth, and fifth graders that had to... And what they did, they incorporated the arts into this conversation. They had a math fraction forest. I wish the gentleman that was on earlier, the types of trees that stayed green all year. So they had a forest of those to show math problems and how you work the fractions out in this forest. I mean, so all kinds of different things that incorporate... It's not a worksheet. You know, the worksheets of yesteryear are gone. It's very... It incorporates creativity and incorporates the standards. It's really... It was amazing and it was so hard to choose because we only could have three winners at each grade level, I mean, at each primary and intermediary. So it was a wonderful way to spend my morning. So, back to Common Core, they're more rigorous than FCAT and they're not aligned. So one of the problems we're currently having is the alignment because next year they're supposed to be fully implemented. And they've only been fully implemented in kindergarten through second grade. So it's sort of... I think, I've heard the teachers saying, "It's really true." So basically, we're having to build the airplane while we're learning to fly it. Because they... And that's a very vivid picture. So, you know, so one of the problems that I think that are significant, that are valid with Common Core are how are we going to move forward with full implementation when we don't even have a testing instrument chosen? So, just to back up a little bit. There were three education summits that Commissioner of Education Pam Stewart had this fall that opened up to the public to hear both pros and cons from teachers, parents, community leaders. You've heard a lot of stuff that really spoke to what you said earlier, that really showed a lack of understanding. But there is also some concerns that were raised that were legitimate. You know, we have a school grading system that's based on these tests. We have assessments that haven't been developed. We have teacher evaluations that are based on these assessments that haven't. So there's a real quandary now. And Dr. Smith and the superintendents of the state of Florida, the Florida Association of District School Superintendents have come forward with a proposal to the State Board of Education to just slow down the process. Just take a deep breath, hit the pause button. Because with all this high-stakes testing, with all this grading of schools, all these evaluations of teachers, I mean, we're asking people to change surgical instruments in the middle of an operation. Now, there's also some confusion with PARC, which is the Partnership of Assessment of Readiness for College and Career. PARC was one of the two consortiums of states that came together to develop testing instruments. They... PARC was the one Florida belonged to, Smarter Balance was the one that California, many of the western states... And Florida was the fiscal agent for PARC. And they were developing... And this whole consortium of states was developing the PARC exam. And as the fiscal agent for PARC, Florida pretty much was going to be set to have to choose the PARC exam. What the governor did, he did not, as many people perceive, say, "We're doing away with Common Core state standards." What he said, "We're no longer going to be the fiscal agent for PARC." And so all that did was say, "Okay, PARC is still a contender for the examinations for Language Arts and Math only." Remember, Common Core is just those two topic subjects. But there are others out there that can participate in Florida choosing which assessment they want to use. This deal we use going to put out, a request for... Not a request for... It's not a request for proposal when it's something... But similar to that, it's a different legal name, in January and it's going to close and be chosen in March. So Pearson, who's currently doing the FCAT, will be part of that. Kaplan is going to be part of that. And who else knows who may participate in a bid in order to provide the state of Florida for the exams required for Common Core? What the superintendents and also the Florida School Boards Association has done, they have... And we backed the superintendent's resolution one hundred percent, say, "We don't even have an exam chosen. We're not going to choose it until March." That leaves us two and a half months of school in order to see, you know, to see what's going to happen. We need to extend the implementation over three years. And everyone is in total agreement that we believe in rigorous standards, we believe in assessment, and we believe in accountability. All we're saying, "Let's get it right." Twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve, there were thirty-four changes to the FCAT accountability. It was so messed up. That was when, remember, they said, "Okay, you can't go down too many grades." And then they raised... They initially had raised the writing scores to four and then they lowered it back to three point five. I mean, it was like, it's a sham. Our assessment right now, our using the assessment as a benchmark for what's going on in our schools is just totally unreliable. And so, instead of continuing to lose the confidence of the public, our teachers, our parents, and our students, we need to just hit the pause button and say, "Let's look at what we want to do." In addition to this now, in addition to the Common Course, in 2014, 15, which is just next year, it was all supposed to be done on computer. Now, I don't know if you've ever taken a test on a computer, but it is different than what we're used to pen and pencil. Well, now we're going to ask third graders to take a test on a computer. And they said they wanted a student to compute a ratio of, I believe, two to one. There's been no funding whatsoever to supply the needed technology necessary in order to have that kind of testing available.
Especially for the number of students that you're talking about.
Students. Oh, absolutely. We don't have those many computers. So we have computer carts. So we do... And one of the things we've done as a district, we've realized that this was coming down the pipe. So we've invested our technology dollars into computer carts that we could take from room to room in order for testing, but we still don't have enough. So it's really disconcerting to think that this is going to be moved forward without a real assessment of how it's going to be implemented and the outcome. I mean, are we just going to negate that? And I think you lose credibility. I think, what I'm hearing, we're losing credibility with our testing assessments as a result of all these missteps. So, it's both Senator Gates, he's the president of the Senate, and Florida Speaker, House Speaker Will Weatherford, asked the Commissioner of Education to withdraw from PARC, just that part, as fiscal agent. And that's what they did. Because they were also hearing... So our legislators were also hearing all these, you know, problems coming forward with PARC. So, there's also something that I think that the federal... That we need to address and then I'll answer any questions that you may have. There was some question that the federal governments was going to use this test for data line, gathering, storing private information on our students and our families. That is not true. They're not going to store academic growth, none of that stuff. I take it back. Currently, we follow... The following data is reported. Student achievement, academic growth, race, ethnicity, date of birth, language, and country birth. There is no collection of information of a student's religion, political party, affiliation, or biometrics. So any of this stuff that was said, "Oh, we're going to now..." You know, all that other was a result of the No Child Left Behind because they had all those data points. You had to know the ethnicity of a child, whether they were Title I, whether they were English as a second language student. So all those pieces of information were already collected for FCAT because that's how that was all measured. Because all those data points. So if you had a child that wasn't performing and they were English as a second language, that went into that data point and you lost points for that. So there's... You have to reach a certain level of English as a second language learners, students in poverty, they also have to have certain achievement levels or else you're... An exceptional student education. So there were separate data points for those already incorporated into what the state is gathering, the information that they're gathering. So, you know, I just... And then, one of the strangest things that I've heard is that Common Core is going to eliminate cursive handwriting. Have you heard this one?
Yes, I read that and I also heard it at a presentation.
Okay, so, but it allows states and individuals to supplement...
And I should say, I read it in the newspapers, one of the issues of concern.
And so, I can tell you, I have a thirty-one-year-old daughter and a twenty-six-year-old son. They both print. And this is way before Common Core state standards. And all these children are keepers savvy. You know, that's just our generation. We spent, you know, time...
Yes, learning how to between the lines and what's up above it and... Yes, learning how to between the lines and what's up above it and below it and all.
However, that is just not, it, it, it's not eliminated. Again, it's a local control. States and individual districts can decide what they want to do. Common Core is not mandating that we get rid of, uh, cursive handwriting. And, um, and I, I want to emphasize, there's no, um, biometrics monitoring of any kind related to Common Core. So I just, again, that is something that just needs to be taken off the table. The real concerns are though about the assessment and, and what it's used for and the technology. The Department of Education, we put in their budget request for this year, and I'll remind you, it's just one of many budget requests, forty million dollars to bring the entire state of Florida, which has two point seven five million students in school, um, enough technology to comply with the legislative mandates of, of going to full implementation with the technology piece of Common Core. Now, there's, there's no way that will cover the use. And in fact, what they're saying to, especially there's so many small districts in the Panhandle that just don't even have bandwidth. They're saying, do one school. If you can just get one school up to where you need to be, instead of spreading the money out. And this is, uh, cause I went to the Florida School Boards Association meeting, um, the first of the month. And, and Commissioner Stewart was there with her, her, uh, team and they addressed technology. They said, don't try and spread the money all over. Just do one school and get that totally up to where it needs to be and, and continue as you go along. Cause they do, I think, recognize that the money for technology is either going to come in drips and drops or not at all. You know, so that's a, a, a real concern.
And you almost need a partner or somebody out there who's generous enough and has, um, the technology piece who would be willing to, cause there was a time years ago when you'd have those companies that would either purchase and provide to the school system or they actually built those, uh, equipped that type of, uh, electronic equipment and the like, and they would donate it to the schools.
Right, but it, not on the scale that we currently.
I know.
We have sixty-one thousand students and a ratio of two to one. And we have a, and because we have, we have a lot of computers, over fifty percent of our computers are five years old. We know that's ancient by technology standard. But because we have put all our resources into these laptop carts in order to be able to comply with the legislative mandate. So that, that's, um, that's something that's troubling to us about how are we really going to get? Now, they have said that they, they don't see how they can require that. They, they have been, so it seems to me there will have to be a pen, pencil and paper alternate, alternative to, um, to this test taking in the 2014, 15, uh, age, you know, time when it's supposed to be fully implemented. I asked Dr. Smith on Tuesday night, cause she, she went before the State Board of Education representing all the superintendents of the state. I asked her, what was her feeling, what was her reception from them asking to, um, to hit the pause button on the implementation of the, and the assessment? She said she felt some of the board members, now remind you, they do implement the state statute, but some of the board members were receptive. They asked good questions. She said, but one or two really felt that any slowdown whatsoever of accountability would, um, hurt Florida and that they were not in favor of slowing down this train in any way, shape or form. So it's going to be up to us as citizens in this county and not me. Because when the legislators hear me coming, they, it's sort of like, you know, they know what I'm going to say. They need to hear from the parents and the community to say, we want a valid, rigorous assessment system that's reliable. And currently, we don't know. They, we just don't. And so we're tr- we're tran- we're, um, transferring from next generation, shun- sunshine state standards, which are currently in place in the rest of the grades, into this blended model of Common Core state standards. So we have our teachers teaching next generation in, in intersected with Common Core and then not even knowing what is going to happen with the assessment, jumping into 2014 from third grade, from kindergarten down to twelfth grade, full implementation. It just doesn't make sense on any level, on any level. So, um, the, a- again, the, the critics say that some of the standards have not been vetted enough. And I understand that. And there probably is some truth in that. And it's just like any other big piece of legislation. It's going to have to be shaped and molded as we go along to see where the pitfalls are. But I can tell you, having each state develop their own test, it, it's, it's not valid. It's not at all valid. So to have common standards, remember, these are just standards. You have local control over the curriculum and how it's implemented. So the, um, and, and one of the things about the standards are, um, they're inten- they're internationally benchmarked. And we've just heard a whole lot about the PISA test that just came out and, and the United States is not where we want it to be. I'm going to send you a video of, um, disaggregating that PISA data when you take out areas of high poverty and what it looks like. Cause the United States does, when, when you benchmark the PISA results against those schools that have ten percent or less poverty, we're at the very top. Ten to twenty-five, we're number one in that category. Ten to twenty-five percent, we're still, but we're still at the Finland level. As we increase, and we have more poverty in the United States, children in poverty, I should say, than most developed countries, than most developed countries. So that impacts the PISA, um, uh, results, I believe. I'm not making excuses because many people criticize that as the, the, um, the soft bigotry of low expectations. And that's not what I'm talking about. If we're going to measure apples to apples, let's make sure the apples are correct. But we still want all apples to rise to the top of that area. You know, that's, but, but when you're at these international benchmarks, it's important to note that, um, most of those countries have so many different ways that they approach education. The United States has gone off on this track of accountability at all costs, assessment at all costs. I have, um, my next door neighbors, a, a first grader and a third grader, so they're like my, my surrogate grandchildren. I'm not blessed with any grandchildren. And I can tell you, the testing, my third grader between the beginning of December until break, there were eight formative assessments. Now, a formative assessment is, think of it like a, um, you're going to a doctor for a checkup. Okay, so that's to see where the student is along the way. A summative assessment is something like the FCAD or end of course exam or end of semester, and that's an autopsy. Cause you've already done the work and now it's the final result. So, um, when you think of it like that, we're, our children are being tested, and this is not just in Lausanne County. This is something that parents are getting very concerned about all over the state. This testing, testing, testing. And one little girl said, I'm going to go back to the second grade. That was, that was more fun. And you know, there has to be a balance. And I, I think right now, with Katie bar the door, there, the, we've lost the balance of, of having our children have rigorous work, having our school districts and teachers accountable, but we've gone, I believe, too far in that direction. So, um, so, you know, the, the, the critical skills that children need today are, are, are very, um, they're really high level. They're very rigorous. And even career and college level, when you look at the lexile levels of different things, I mean, when you, all reading material is, is lexiled at a certain grade level, like Time Magazine is written at an eighth grade level. Some of the highest level, uh, uh, college textbooks are like at thirteen, you know, uh, one thirteen, they call them the thirteen hundreds. The highest are some of the stuff that you need for careers. You know, the manuals that you need to be a good electrician or a good repair, you know, they're written in technical jargon. And you have to have an understanding of that. So this critical thinking, and they call it the D quadrant, the highest, you know, the high, uh, capacity for learning. You know, a lot of the technical stuff, career and, and, and college readiness, the career stuff is right up there. People think, well, kids shouldn't need algebra two if they're going to go into careers. Have you seen a car engine lately? I mean, it's not just changing spark plugs or, you know, it's, it's all computers. It's really technical. There's a, a great deal that's required of our students just to go into the, into the workforce that's never been required before. So the, the, the standards are benchmarked, as I said, internationally. Skills needed to perform high, high skill, high wage occupations. And, and the DOE strongly supports the full implementation of this. However, um, we're trying to say, let's slow down the assessment piece. The, it's, it's so punitive to schools when these grades come out. Cause there's excellence in all our schools. You know, it's, it's across the board. It's all our schools do excellent work. So, um, as you saw, our graduation rate is going up, you know, it, it was up high and then they took out all GEDs. So that's why, across the state, so, you know, we still have a work to do in graduation levels, absolutely. And, um, and our career, however, our career and academies are doing great things in our schools. In fact, we're expanding them. I, I don't know if you saw, uh, Atlantic High School is going to be partnering with Embry-Riddle, uh, an aviation academy.
Oh, I think I did read that, yes.
Yeah, and so that's, that's wonderful. Um, there's a new, a criminal justice academy that we've just started this year at New Serena Beach High School. Um, there's a communications academy that we've started at Deland High School. Um, we have been recognized by the Ford Foundation uh, as one of the sixteen top school districts in the country doing career readiness. Now, some of them are STEM, science, technology, education and, um, en- engineering and math. So some of them are college oriented. But we have Bulldog Construction. We have some communications academy. We're going to have health, uh, academies.
And culinary.
Culinary, that, and, and by the way, uh, Taste of the Twenty Four, we're going to have some of our culinary students. They're gonna, uh, help there, uh, from our schools. So, you know, all of this is part and parcel of trying to shape the, the workforce for the 21st century. It needs a combination of both. It needs a combination of both.
Let me say very quickly, you're listening with, to Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. My guest is Candace Langford. She is the current Chair of the Lausanne County School Board. And we're talking about Common Core. We know they're state standards, Common Core state standards. And, uh, the, uh, progress report, so to speak, and where we stand, uh, not just locally, but as a state as well. Candace, is there, uh, truth to the fact and, and some of us have read it in the paper, where there are legislators that are now saying, hey, wait, we don't want Common Core?
Yes. And we had, uh, we, at our Florida School Boards, uh, meeting, we had the superintendent.
Oh, I should say, I'm sorry, WLE, uh, thirteen eighty AM on your radio dial. I'm over in Florida. Getting so engrossed in this. Uh, and this is also Goliath Radio. Okay, let's go.
At our Florida School Boards Association meeting, we had the Superintendent of Miami-Dade Schools, um, uh, Superintendent Cavelllo. And he is, uh, Miami-Dade is the fourth largest school district in the nation. And it has a close to four hundred thousand students.
Wow.
He was an amazing, is amazing, uh, he came to the United States when he was fifteen years old. Fifteen or sixteen, left Portugal. Very, very, a fascinating story. Nevertheless, he, he said, you know, this interesting thing about Common Core is it's, it, it's united the far left and the far right. And he said, so when you look at both of those extremes that are talking, uh, ne- negatively about Common Core state standards, you have to know, you have to run away from both of them and figure that this is something that the middle can embrace. Cause they're both out there criticizing them for, for different reasons. Um, and, and so some of the legislators in the state of Florida represent, I believe, both sides of that, um, of, of those parties. And so, yes, there are some that are saying that. But I think, um, it, it, it entails educating. And I don't know what they're afraid of because it's not a federal government mandate. It's not, it, it, and, and that's just troubling to me that no matter how many times you say that, it, they don't allow the facts to enter into their opinion. The, the far left doesn't like it because they feel that it's a money generating machine for the testing companies. And they feel that the tests have not been validated, the testing mechanism hasn't been validated. And some of the standards should not be, um, you know, the standards haven't been vetted as much as. So one takes it academic, don't do this. The other one's saying, this is big government stepping in.
Trying to indoctrinate our children.
Indoctrinate our children.
Whatever.
And just, and don't, and you know, just don't buy it. So it's really interesting to see both ends of the spectrum. However, most educators, and I, and I know you said you had, um, some teachers or union.
The Union, Rob Smart said that they support it.
They support it.
And they were involved in some of the development.
They have. The superintendent supported. The school board members supported. A great many of the parents supported with the caveat is, let's implement it correctly.
Right, right.
That's the implementation is the big holdup that all the educators have. And I, and I think there's some validity to saying, look, if we can take a look at these standards and it's not, not achieving what we want to achieve, then yeah, then we revisit them. But that, you revisit curriculum every year. I mean, the days of a teacher going to his or her file and pulling out the same ditto sheet that they've used for twenty-five years is long gone. You know, that's not there. But key to this is, is professional development for our teachers, our educators. They have to be comfortable, um, teaching it. And another piece of this, and we have the, the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, are the, the Departments of Education and our, on our higher ed, um, in, in our colleges and universities. Because are they teaching their future teachers how to do this, how to implement this? Um, we had the Chair of the Department of UCF's, um, Education Department and the University of Florida come to one of our Central Florida School Boards Coalition. And they very much want to be partners in this conversation. Cause they, at the end of the day, we're assessing their students that now become our teachers. And seeing it how, how prepared they are to enter our workforce in our community. You know, Stetson does a great job. Bethune-Cookman does a great job. UCF, however, and Daytona State have bigger programs than both of those schools. Um, and so they're, they're, and I know, um, Dr. Potter has come to quite a few of the meetings to, to listen and see what's going on. And I know, uh, Mary Bruno, who's from the school system now works for Daytona State. So they have a real insight into what's required. Chris Caldwell, who was with the, uh, district, Dr. Chris Caldwell, he's now Chair of the Education Department at Stetson. So again, this cross pollination of, uh, from, from every level needs to take a good, hard look of what the standards are.
And you've mentioned, uh, Bethune-Cookman has.
Right, oh, yeah. And Carol is, uh, the Dr., uh, Carol, um, oh, she's gonna, she chairs that department. She's wonderful, so energetic and just really is, is working so hard to get her intern. She's wonderful, so energetic, and just really is, is working so hard to get her interns. And, um, and Mr. Al Bowie had been with the school system for a long time. Dr. Jackson has just, um, appointed Al as the K-12 liaison between Bethune-Cookman and the school district. Again, having those kinds of conversations.
Right.
In order to make sure we're getting what we need to do, done for our students, and having the resources on both sides of that equation. Um, UCF has, uh, has avatars that they teach their students to be, they have virtual classrooms. And, and I had a good friend of mine at this, uh, who's at Stetson, and they don't have that type of technology, and she said to me, "Yeah, but how do you give the students the "I" when, when you're an avatar?" You know, that "I" like, uh-huh, that, that non-verbal communication.
Which your parents know so well.
So, all of those things are important to, um, and you know, in the state of Florida, we have a hundred and seventy-one thousand teachers. Yeah, that's, that's a tremendous workforce, and in fact, school districts in most of, uh, the counties in our state are the largest employers. So, the economic development of getting this right should be just as important to the business community as it is to the education community and the parents that are part of that as well.
And from what I gather, the business community actually did play a role. You mentioned the Chamber of Congress, but there, there were business leaders who did play a role in helping to develop some of those standards. Because they wanted individuals, when they finished school, and we need to, we need to say too that you're not just preparing them for college, because not everyone will go to college. You're also preparing them in terms of critical thinking for any job area, yes, in the workforce.
And also the soft skills that are necessary to be productive in a works, a workforce.
And a lot of employers talk about those that are so key and so important. There are some things you cannot teach, but there, there's a way of thinking, you know, this isn't indoctrination, but there, there, there are some basic things that employers will say that these, uh, the students have to have, and then they can train them from that point on, but they, they have to have that foundation.
Being on time, making eye contact, greeting people when they walk into a room. I mean, I do this, uh, we do this, um, program, um, in Volusia County, every new teacher to the district. We, a school board member and HR person goes to each school in their district and welcomes that teacher. It's during the school day, so you interrupt their class and, uh, and they're always surprised with the elementary kids that are there with big guys, and, and the high school kids are going, "Yeah, yeah, go, go," and applauding. But it's interesting to even be able to assess the teachers, cause when you walk into their classroom, how they react, and some of those, those soft skills are more apparent in some than in others. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of telling when, uh, to look at our new young workforce, not all young, but new to the, to the district. So, that's very important. Um, so, and, and they want to have a skilled workforce, and that's why our career academies are such an important part of what we want to do. And Gwen, you know, another part of the, of the, um, state legislatures, uh, Senate bills, I, I think it's, I'm getting it confused with Senate Bill Six and Ten Seventy-Six, but nevertheless, required end of course exams to be developed. In addition to the Common Core State Standards in Language Arts and Math. So, there are nine hundred, over nine hundred end of course exams, we call EOCs, that need to be developed.
Remember that.
So, you have this, I mean, it's, to have a valid testing instrument, it has to jump through a lot of hoops. I mean, you've heard, you know, rarely, but sometimes, where an SAT question, they'll do even oops at that level. Cause some really brilliant student has, has pointed out that this answer is wrong. You know, when they, when they get back their stuff. So, um, even those testing companies, SAT, ACT, I know when, um, Commissioner Tony Bennett, who was here just for a short time, he was talking about alternatives to PRC, cause they were afraid there wasn't going to be anything ready for implementation. He talked about SATs and ACTs. The only problem with those is they're not career ready. You know, they're more college assessment. And so, you know, that, that wouldn't work, uh, totally, in, in part it might. Uh, when, when we did have more money in the district before the Great Recession, we had all our, um, we gave the SAT, PSAT to all our students, I believe, in the eighth grade to be able to have, again, a formative assessment of where they were, you know, before they took. So, it's, it's all very, maybe it was the tenth grade, I'm getting, I think it was tenth.
I think maybe tenth, because Ryan Yannis took it, and he scored so high on it that he didn't have to take the other.
Yeah, I think it was the tenth grade, now that I'm thinking about the time. But, uh, it, all these pieces have to come together, and there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
And so, again, you can't, you don't wanna build the airplane when you're flying it. Um, so, it's, it's, it's a struggle to get people to understand that we're not saying, "Don't do this." We're just saying, "Do it right." Do it right, you know, and then be able to be fle, flexible. One of the things that's so frustrating to me, No Child Left Behind passed in two thousand and two. It was up for reauthorization in two thousand and seven. The Florida School Boards Association and the associations from around the country, every school has gone up to Washington along with superintendents every year because there are so many problems with No Child Left Behind. Uh, Secretary Duncan has given waivers to states, so they don't have to comply with all aspects of No Child Left Behind. And Florida has one of those waivers. Since two thousand and seven, we've gone up there and said, "Please fix this. Please fix this." Now it's called ESEA again, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Still not done. It's still, and we're now at twenty thirteen. We're six years past its overdue date. It's not only, not only is the banana yellow, it's, it's black. You know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not functioning anymore. So, you have to have these waivers, and every year there's another excuse. So, again, they have to be willing to look at this and say, they're going to be, there's, there's a need for corrections, there's a need for righting the ship, because what we're working under right now is not valid.
And they have to be willing to fund it.
That would be nuts.
Because from what I gather, No Child Left Behind, that has been a major flaw of, of that program since the beginning.
Especially.
Totally insufficient funding.
And, uh, you know, we, we have the Title I funds that we use for, for our schools in high poverty. We have, um, some, it's the ESE funds for, uh, our disabled students. Uh, however, that, the funding for the mandates for just our disabled students is right at, under twenty percent. Under twenty percent of what it actually costs us to meet the mandates that are required.
Wow.
So, it's, it was a high, at one point in time with, uh, ARo funding, there was the, um, American Recovery and, um, Act, American, uh, there was another R in there. So, they, so the funding was up to almost twenty, twenty-one percent, but not now. Not now, it's fallen back down. So, we have, um, we have mandates, and we understand those. On the ground, this is what every school district in the state of Florida does every day, no matter whether the funding is there or not. The lights come on, the teachers show up for work, they are dedicated. I mean, you should have seen, when I walked through Citrus Grove today, the kids were coming in, uh, and it, it, this was special area of PE Day, so a lot of the kids were coming in out of the hall with their, you know, for the PE, and these teachers were just so excited that we were there to judge. And so, one little boy said, "Are you judging our door? Are we gonna win?" And I said to him, "I do take bribes." And he looked at, cause he was a third grader, and I was, "Just kidding, just kidding." But, um, they're just so excited about what they're doing, and they do that every day.
Yes, yes.
You know, it's, it's my psychic income to go into the schools and get that kind of, a boost. Uh, it's really wonderful.
Well, uh, the other day, I'm a substitute for Reading Pals, and I went into Horizon, and there were these four and five-year-olds, uh, three of them, and I'm going through the reading, and I'm also, you know, it's, it's about numbers and letters and, you know, the recognition of that. And I want you to know that every one of them knew their numbers. Uh, in fact, one of them got so bored that I was even reading this book about numbers. They knew every number, they could recognize the numbers, they could count, and, I mean, it was, it was just phenomenal when you consider for, for young people at that age to not only be able to, not only were they able to, and maybe they're part of that group that you've already gotten into some of that critical thinking with. Uh, they were K and first, I think, they were four or five, whatever.
They're doing Common Core, they're totally Common Core.
And, I mean, they were so articulate of, uh, in terms of not just the numbers and everything, but the book. Uh, and they were also talking about, they were actually teaching me almost, saying, you know.
Well, that's.
You know, it would be good if, if, uh, you could take this and, and you could do X, Y, Z with it, and, you know, and that could help you be able to do this, that, and the other. I mean, these kids were just, uh, again, I, I was almost speechless, and you know what I ended up telling them? "Could you help me, uh, to understand such and such?" Uh, because they just, I mean, in terms of their level of thinking, and not just knowing the numbers, but being able to, that we were also.
In different contexts.
Yes, and put them into sentences and the like, and, uh, just, just, our young people are just so smart and so intelligent, and it's great that, and I, I, from what I hear, I'm hearing you say is that, through this program, they are able to challenge them to be their best. But also get into not just critical thinking, but the creativity, which I have continually said has been pretty much taken out of the school system.
Well, I, I'd love for you to come to Citrus Grove and see the, the doors and how they showcase Common Core standards. And, and some of them, the kids even wrote out the standards and showed, and then they, they, they had it, uh, up there. I, I mean, and some of the writing, some of the fourth grade writing, I mean, it was amazing, the imagery they had in there, to be able to, to do that. I mean, it, it, it was really, and then they had to do selfies of themselves in a, in a snow globe. So, they had like a plastic plate, and then one little girl had on a mitten on it, probably wadded up a piece of, of paper or something, it's like it was a snowball in her hand, and it was in the middle of this plastic plate with the dialogue that she, and the, her little story that she had written underneath it. And then they had to, and then I think in the fifth graders, they had to write a synopsis of their favorite book. And some of the books they were writing about, and one did, uh, Harry Potter and the Half-Blood Prince. And he was, I, I'm reading this, cause I, I read those books, I'm like, I'm like, spoiler alert, he tells that Dumbledore was killed, you know, just. And so, just, you know, and how, I just, it was really, it gave you a wonderful feeling about what's going on in those classrooms.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. My, my niece moved here, back here from, uh, Tennessee, and her young ones, who were then, I think, uh, two and three, or three and four, they were doing, writing essays and the like. Um, so, uh, and I, I really just say and think that it is phenomenal what is happening in our educational system, and, um, I, I am just as pleased as I can be that more of that critical thinking and more of that use of encouraging them to use their imagination, which is, in truth, what has, um, hurt the United States, I think, in terms of its competition with a lot of other countries.
We've always been ahead in patents, and, and that's just a big piece of creativity.
Yeah, we, we, well, we do it, and then they take it, and the other companies, and they're the ones who end up, you know, making the big bucks or whatever off of a lot of that stuff. So, uh, there, there's a lot to be done, but we're well on the way, and I would hope, as I'm sure that you're saying, that you would hope that people would get on the bandwagon pretty much, and, uh, but let's do it right.
Right, let's do it right, and, and I'm not saying that everything about Common Core is perfect, cause it's not.
And what is, what is, right.
But understand that this is the curriculum and the curriculum maps that have been developed, the curriculum, state of Florida curriculum maps, our local teachers do this collaboratively. You know, so the fourth graders will get, the fourth grade teachers get, "Okay, how are we gonna do this?" I mean, because it's a lot to absorb. And you might be a better English Language Arts teacher than I am. Maybe you have that, that something that connects with kids, but I might be a better math teacher. Well, what, what's your skill? How, you know, this Thinking Math, our, our teacher there, Jeanie, oh, she, oh, I hate that, but she's at Cypress Creek, she's the most amazing math teacher that you would, I, I would love for you to visit her classroom over in Port Orange. Just amazing what she does with those children. Um, and so that kind, and then she's teaching other teachers how she accomplishes what she does. And that's how, you know, when you have these superstars in, 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 in certain subject areas, you have to leverage that. And, uh, because it's a lot required of our teachers today, a lot.
And if you would just reiterate that, uh, the, the Common Core State Standards, uh, were developed by a collaborative group of people.
They were, these standards are a state-led bipartisan effort that was initiated by the National Governors Association and the Council of Chief State School Officers Organization, with the involvement of teachers, principals, superintendents, parents, community members, and business leaders, all part of the development. This was not the Obama administration or the Bush administration, uh, coming down and saying, "This is what you have to do." And No Child Left Behind said, "You have to do this," and each state does it on their own, and, and that was a disaster. Mississippi, every fourth grader was gifted, and in Florida, every fourth gra, grader was failing. I mean, there was, there was a disconnect. So, this was an aha moment for our nation to say, "We have to do something. This is bipartisan. We have to get this right for our future."
And the only reason that, uh, the request is being made for the pause button, button is because we wanna make sure as we move forward that the evaluations, assessments, and all of that.
They're all entwined, the school grading, our, our kids being tested, and, and having, having, uh, their, their knowledge graded, are they retained, are they not retained, are they gonna graduate from high school or not graduate from high school?
And the teacher evaluations, all of that.
Oh, the teacher evaluations, right, they're, they're just, it's, it's not valid. And when you don't have a valid system, um, it doesn't work.
So, we need the time to get it right. Keep moving, keep moving forward, but slow down certain pieces of it till we get it right.
And Gwen, this has been such a pleasure, and I say Merry Christmas too.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Merry Christmas, happy new year, happy holidays to everyone. And, uh, our thanks to Candace Langford, again, the Chair of Volusia County School Board, uh, for coming on and sharing with us the, uh, information about the Common Core State Standards.
You have a great night.
Oh, you too. And, uh, remember guys to join us every Thursday starting at six fifteen until, unless I, uh, or until I boot the big guy out of the chair, as we discuss issues to inform and empower y'all listeners. Also, be sure to go to the website, www.gwenhappertwo.com. And, uh, this, um, will be uploaded to YouTube, so that those of you who wanna go to the website and access it and share it with others, so that they can be better informed about Common Core State Standards, uh, please feel free to do that. It will be up within the next, uh, day or two, uh, at the most, probably next, uh, the next day. Uh, but go there at www.gwenhappertwo.com. Until next time, be informed, be empowered, stand tall for that which is right and truthful. Again, this is Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. My, my, um, guest, Candace Langford, Chair of Volusia County School Board, and all of you, hey, we're still standing, you be blessed, and have a great week.